One new spot for Robert. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started at 6 o'clock. On behalf of the Board of Commissioners for Celine County, I want to thank you for taking the time to come to the meeting tonight to discuss the Celine County Jail project. There is a sign up sheet, I think from the Celine, Dave Orner here has it, it'll be over here somewhere, I think. It's Celine County Concerned Citizens for Jail Reform. If you want to get involved in that, you're welcome to get to sign up with them. In order to conform to the Kansas Open Meetings Law and Act, we do, we, all five Commissioners are here, we will be discussing county business. With that having been said, I do hereby call the meeting to order. I will tell the clerk that we'll dismiss with calling the roll. All five Commissioners are present. Our architectural and engineering firm trainer, H L, Mr. Jeff Lang, has structured the evening to include a 30 to 45 minute presentation, and following the presentation, he'll open us for questions and answers. With us tonight are members of our staff, all kinds of sheriffs, department, county staff throughout, Commissioners, et cetera, and members of the jail reduction committee. We're also pleased to introduce the newest partner to this collaborative team, Mr. Dave Duzik with Turner Construction Company back here, their syrup level. He's able to serve as our construction manager at risk for this project. We do ask that you wait until the question and answer portion to present any comments or to ask specific questions on this project. With that, I'll turn it over to Jeff Lang, who is principal in charge from Turner H L to be Kansas.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Good evening. So, part of it, the part of what we're doing tonight is, and I gotta find the right place to stand, because I'm gonna stand in front of the image, and you're not gonna be able to see what I'm gonna present, so I'll try and stand back here so everybody can see. I wanna talk a little bit about our process, and talk a little bit about what we're going to do as it relates to the overall schedule for the next few months, okay? So, our team, our design team, and now our construction team has been meeting with Sheriff's Office and others to begin the planning process as we go forward to look at what the needs are for this community. A lot of you have had an opportunity to see a bomb referendum that's gone through, looked at it, and voted down. A lot of you have seen and/or heard in the newspaper about a lot of different things that have gone on as it relates to this community on the jail side. Part of what we want to be able to do over the next few months is share with you what the issue is. You know, when we interviewed for this project, one of the things that I said at the very beginning is, what are we trying to solve? If we don't know what we're solving, then we're just going at it, and we're not gonna, we're not gonna get to the end in the right solution. You have to know what the issue is, and what the problem is before you can go solve. Today, we're gonna talk through some things that we've worked as a group on, so we're gonna talk about the goals and priorities of our group as we started to look at this project. We hope that those goals and priorities align what you, as a community, believe is the right things to look at for this project, okay? We're gonna talk about programs. You know, one of the things when I started this project, that we talked in the initiative group, and as we talked with the stakeholders and individual Commissioners, was what programs are the sheriff doing within the community, within the jail current? What are we doing? Why are we doing these things? So, the thing is, is we're gonna talk about that today, and talk about why programs are important. We're also gonna talk a little bit about jail trends. What's going on nationally, so that you, as a community, can think about those things as it relates to your own community? What's happening nationally? We're gonna talk a little bit about what jails were built towards in the 70s, 80s, and early 90s, and what jails are built for today. And it's not about what this community needs, it's about what we're seeing in custody inmates, what we're seeing as it relates to mental health, and what we're seeing as it relates to females. Now, we wanna be informative, we wanna be transparent as a team, there's no solutions today. So, if you came today for a solution, sorry, I don't have one, because we've just started to identify what the problem is. That was my first thing I said, is if we don't identify the problem, we can't create a solution, okay? So, today, we wanna listen to you at the end. It's Q and A, I'm here, we have many people here, and I wanna hear what you have to say, because that's what's important, okay? Yeah, there's gonna be some of you out there that are gonna say, "We don't need to do this." And I get that, and I understand it, and I recognize it. But I want you to keep coming back, because there's a process that we're gonna go through at the end of the day, that when we're done with this process, when we have a solution here, I think, it'll all resonate with this community. Those of you that are here for the information today, keep coming back, keep coming and being a part of what we're talking about, because as we move forward, we actually may have some solutions that we've been up in a room like this, or in a location, and you have the opportunity to be able to actually sketch them, talk about them, and understand them. Those are the things that I think are really important about this process. In a community event like this, in a community building, it's gonna be not just an investment for today, but an investment for the long term. Put your stamp on it, just as much as anybody else. I will tell you, this is not my project, the sheriff just won't be interviewed, it's not my project. It's your project, it's this community's project. And the only way it's better, and the only way it serves this community the best, and serves the sheriff and his staff the best, is to get your input. So, that's what we're here for today. So, let's go through the goals and priorities. You can read through these and see what we've got. So, we went through as a team, and we went through a lot of different goals and priorities together, and so I wanna list the highlights, what we really hit at the end of the day, and what makes sense for our team, and then we'll talk about that at the end. You can come back and talk about what you think are better for goals and priorities as a community, so we can talk about those collectively. There's a no cost solution, okay? And I think, as you've seen this over the last year or so, whether we built something or not, this community's gonna continue to spend dollars out of county to move inmates to other communities, okay? So, you need to think about that as it goes forward, where that lands at the end of the day, and what that dollar amount is at the end of the day. And that dollar amount will resonate with the dollar amount, because it's resonating for the project itself, okay? We wanna spend dollars on the right things, we wanna create that value of the priorities that you have as a community, and as a sheriff's office, and spend it on the right things, okay? We don't need to spend it on bull plated bullet fixtures, we need to splendid, spend it on the things that make sense for this project, whether it's programs, whether it's space for programs, or whether it's housing to bring those inmates back to the community itself. We need to create a long-term solution. This is not just a solution for today, like I said before, this is a long-term. We've gotta think about it long-term. And the thing is, you've gotta think about the types of inmates that we're gonna have, not just today, but what are those inmates 10 years from now? What are those inmates 15 years from now, 20 years from now? Because I could tell you right now, that if you sat here today, in 1994 or 1990, and planned your burn facility, you weren't probably thinking about some of the things, or the statistics I'm gonna share with you, as it relates to mental health, and as it relates to females, and female inmates, okay? Safety and security, that's paramount, not just for the community, but it's paramount for the sheriff's staff, and it's paramount for the inmates, with pre, okay? Prison rape enforcement act that's out there. Talking about those types of things, ACA, okay? Accreditation for this facility, to make sure that it meets certain guidelines, so that the cells, that you have an opportunity to look at something today when we're done, so that cells have a standard size, standard natural light, things along those lines that need to make sure we're doing in this facility, okay? We wanna be able to address mental health issues. It's an ongoing piece, and it's gonna continue to be an ongoing piece, and as much as we wanna talk about what it is here at this community in the state of Kansas, by the way, just so everybody knows, and most of you probably do, the state of Kansas doesn't have any more beds for mental health. Those are out. So, where does that go? It goes down to the community and the counties. So, how do we, how do we make sure that we can house those individuals in a manner that makes sense, that's therapeutic, that's normalized? We wanna have the right people in jail. So, at the end of the day, it's getting the right individuals in jail that are housed If you haven't had a chance to go through the facility, do that. Spend some time with the sheriff or the staff to go through that. I know somebody who has, I have, a handful of times, and he's open to do that. Go through the facility, it's well maintained by the staff. It's, you need to see it. There are things there that you need to see, as a community, to better understand what the existing conditions are. He's doing a great job, the staff's doing a great job, the county Commissioners are doing a great job to keep that building going, but if you go through that facility, he'll recognize what we're talking about today, and what we need to be doing moving forward. The other thing I would share is about staff. We talked about this as related, as a group, as a stakeholder group, about staff. Staff and, I, you know, I think that many times, it's probably not the most glorious job to be a jail captain, or to work in a jail facility. On the same hand, that's a, that's a job that people take on, and care about, and have passion for. We need to make sure that we provide right spaces more than, there's a huge stress level. When you walk through a facility, not just this facility here, I do this across the board, and I walk through multitude of facilities, and you can see the stress level, especially when there's an incident occurring, and all sorts of things that are happening within that facility. Where do they go and de-stress? Because if they don't have that opportunity to go de-stress, that starts to reflect back to the inmates. How they treat them, how they work with them, those are things we need to think about throughout local Tri-Big Day of Compassion. It makes a huge difference at the end of the day. The other thing is, is retention of that staff. If you talk to other facilities that have a good space and a good area for staff, they'll tell you they're able to retain those staff, and a good staff, and once they learn and understand how to operate in that facility, and do the things they need to do, they care about. They care about the individuals that are in there, and they wanna work for those inmates. Cost-effective design, and cost-effective, or cost, sorry, and efficient staff model. We wanna make sure that what we design and what we look at is most cost-effective for you as a county, not just first cost, but long-term cost, that's why we're talking about staff. And it's also energy efficiency, as it relates to the overall building efficiency, okay? We're gonna look at those things, because the thing is, is that short-term cost gets paid off in 10, 15 years. What's that, what's that model in 25, 30 years when we have staff, when you have energy costs? So, we wanna talk about those things and work through those as we look at this design. We wanna be able to provide a long-term medical solution in this facility. Currently, if you go into that facility, what you'll see is there's a medical area, small, and they're doing the best they can. There's a lot of individuals that have, nurses, those that come into, clinicians that come in, that don't have the space to go to, to be able to actually serve the inmates. So, we need to be able to look at those types of things. They're partnering with individuals and agencies here in this community, and they need to be able to bring them in there and utilize that, so that inmates have those programs, and have that ability to get help on the medical side, and help on the mental side for the, for the, for different clinicians to come in. We wanna make sure we get program space, and we talk about that as a big item in our discussion. Part of, there are programs that they are currently doing now, and those programs aren't run as efficient, because they don't have the space, the adequate space for it. And it's not just about one room or two rooms, it's, they actually have individuals that wanna volunteer and come and work in the space, volunteer in the space to do programs, but not able to, because either we don't have enough time, or we don't have the space to accommodate, okay? So, those are some of the things we talked about. I think those are really, really important goals, so as we finish up and go down through the rest of the presentation, think about what your goals are, okay? It may be a dollar-related item, it may be something else that's personal to you about this project, think about what that is. So, let's talk a little bit about jail design and the trends, and I don't know, some of you may have seen some of these things that I've talked about before, you may have read some articles about some of these types of things. Nationally, what you're seeing locally is happening nationally, okay? So, this isn't a new thing, this isn't just your community. Drugs, alcohol, it's a normal thing, it's happening everywhere, okay? So, we've got that issue right here in your community. I, I, I wanna share this too, before we get started, before I go down through this, because I think this is another item that I wanna make sure I'm clear on. I was talking with Martha earlier, and her and I were sharing something, and she made a good comment to me, that, I just clicked as we were getting started on this. I do justice work, do justice work for a couple reasons. First, a passion for that, second, the life, really, really enjoy architecture. If I had to do jails, that's probably me. So, I'm not standing up here today because, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you, you need more beds, or whatever it is. I'm doing this because, this is what I do for a living, because I'm hoping at the end of the day, is over the next, as Jim and I've talked, over the next 10, 15, 20 years, we're not talking about beds anymore, we're talking about transitional housing, we're talking about other types of components that we're building for communities. Jim made another comment to me earlier, and had forgotten about this too, and so thank you, Jim, for putting it in my brain, which is, 25, 30 years ago, we didn't talk about programs, we didn't talk about mental health, we sure as heck didn't talk about females. It was about putting people in cells, locking them up, and that was it. We're doing so much more today for jail design, programs across the board for communities, and that's really what this is about. So, think about those things, and I challenge you, and to go out and look, I mean, we've got the internet today, you can Google all kinds of great things, and look at it, there's so many different things going on in the community, or nationally, in this type of arena, just take a look at what's out there, it's good for you, I think. So, let's talk a little bit about female inmates. They are the fastest-growing population, you may have known that, you may have got in 1970, if you counted that as one, in female inmate, per 10 or so male inmates is about what that was. Today, females are growing by 14 times, not about, 14 times faster than the male inmates, okay? We're looking more at female as a trauma-informed design. And when I talk about trauma-informed design, it's about, I'm gonna touch on this a little bit later, it really is about, what is that environment? When we designed jails in the 70s, 80s, and 90s, it was about males. It really was, and it was about programs for males, and we've just now gotten to a point where we're starting to think about females, because they need different things. They need different programs, they need to be treated a little differently, and they need, they, they, I'm not a female, so I'm gonna tell you right now, I'm really out of my realm, but you know what I'm talking about, as it relates to female, and who they are, and what they are. They're different individuals than males, so design has to change, okay? No, no, 35% of the inmate population today is male health. I talked a little bit earlier about what the state of Kansas is doing, that's a national trend, by the way. They're not starting to build psychiatric locations, they're moving those direct, those back to counties, and the counties take care of them. And if that's the case, then we need to house them correctly, not just put them in a facility. Mental health is a, is a, they, they are different individuals when it comes to designing jails for them, especially housing and cell units, and how they react within a facility is completely different. And so, if you don't have the right spaces, you don't have the right design, at that point, you're just creating a problem for sheriff's staff, and you're not getting what you need at the end of the day to get them to a place where they can actually go back out into the community. There are a lot of other things we can talk about as it relates to mental health, and we'll touch on some of those as we go through this. Talk a little bit about females, I talked to earlier, a little bit about that, that there's job training, life skills, that they have that are completely different. There's hygiene that we talk about that's completely different. You know, I read an article a while back, it was talking about a facility in Texas, and one of the things, it's an all-female facility, and as I read that article, and you go down through that, and talk about, they talk about female needs and those hygiene needs. That jail actually didn't even have the proper hygiene needs for those females, they didn't even think about it. And then, once they actually began to think about those things and provide them, females actually started to react in a positive manner in that facility. The facility changed, the dynamic, the culture in that facility changed, so those are things that we have to think about, and they're just simple things like that. Treatment programs, so a lot of the females that come into these facilities are, they have some domestic violence, they may be pregnant, that's a different dynamic, right? The male that's coming in. So, that means it's a different program, it's a different way of treating, and it's a different way of working with them, both from the standpoint of staff, as well as from the volunteers that come in, okay? So, those are some of the things that we have to think about as we look at, not just the current facility you have, but what are we gonna do next? Currently, the sheriff works with some agencies locally for treatment programs, those types of things around the area. There's probably other community agencies that would be more than happy to be a part of what we're trying to accomplish, or he's trying to accomplish. The difference is, is there may not be space, there may not be the time or the ability, so those are things we've gotta think through as we go through this. Needing access, we need to provide community programs, okay? We need to expand the rehabilitation for non-custody. So, when they get out, we wanna be able to provide them alternative programs for them to go to, because you can do the programs in the facility, okay? But if they walk out the door, and they don't have a place to go, they don't have a counselor to go talk to, or be a part of, or continue to check in with, those programs, although they're great, and they're doing great things in the jail, they're not carrying forward outside of that, that continuum of care stops, now where do they go, right? So, we have to start to think about those types of things as a community. We can do a lot of things in the jail, now we gotta go outside that community, or outside the jail, into the community, and think about how we continue that care. So, I work with a lot of different communities, but I can tell you that there are some that are really, really active in trying to do those types of things. They have counselors and sheriff, I think you do some of the same stuff. There's counselors that actually come in to the facility, talk to inmates, work with inmates, and have that continuum of care when they walk out the door, so they can go to that same counselor after the fact. That's great piece to have, we need to continue that, and there's other agencies that need to continue to do those things. We need to promote, promote and reduce recidivism, and by doing that, is making people aware of what's going on within this community, within the facility. So, we talked a little bit earlier about mental health. Mental health is, as we've done some studies and some work over the years, therapeutic design, a cell is not a cell when it comes to mental health. A housing unit, and a place that is a neighborhood space, that you would go and see in a facility, is not the same for mental health. Some individuals wanna be alone, wanna be in their own cell, and what have you. Some individuals actually need to have another person in their cell. The way they, the way they are, the way their personality works, that has to happen, so within a design, and within a thought, you have to think about that holistically. Daylighting and creating open space is paramount for those that mentally, you know, quiet rooms, multi-purpose space, and programs. Those are critical for what we're trying to get accomplished for those types of individuals. So, think about those things as we go forward. We're gonna talk a little bit about programs, and as we think about programs, one of the things that I think is important is, what are programs for? Why do we do programs? What's the whole goal behind having programs within a facility? I'm an architect, so I have to take in a lot of information to be able to talk about this. There are people that sit in this room today, you probably know a lot more than I do, as it relates to some of this information I'm gonna share with you. Programs are important. If I don't have a program that allows me for, to help me with my anger management, if I don't have a program that may help me with job skills, if I don't have a program in a facility like this that helps me learn how to write a check, okay? If I don't have those things, and I walk out of the facility when I'm done, and my sentence is done, and I walk out, I go back to the same people that I knew before, because that's the comfort zone. I don't have a purpose. You know, I think it's important to recognize that there are people that do things in our community, and they need to be in jail. And there are those individuals, and they're in there. There are other individuals that need some help, that need a second chance, and to provide those programs, and provide them some guidance, and provide them a purpose. The other part of the article that I read about on the female side, when I was reading that article, is the females felt a sense of purpose, because they had a program that allowed them to go far, that allowed them to learn a trade within the facility. So, when they walked out, they had a purpose, and they wanted to go do something with their lives at that point. That's really what we're after at the end of the day, because these individuals will walk out of your facility and come into your community. And if we wanted to just keep Roy's, you doing the revolving door, and recycling through, that's great, we can do that, and there's communities that do that all the time, but at the end of the day, I think we want those individuals to come be a part of the community and actually serve in the community. So, we need to be able to do those things. Transitional housing is a discussion that we've had, we've talked about a little bit. Transitional housing relates back to the program, relates back to what we're trying to do, it gives a place for individuals that come to, come back to those same volunteers and get involved back with that same program. Get with the community, individuals that they have, that are part of, in the jail itself and outside the jail itself, and it gives them a network of individuals. So, we have to begin to think about those types of things going forward, what's that long-term solution, okay? So, here's a list, I'm not gonna run through this, but I'm gonna let you take a minute or two, and I want you to read through this list. and I want you to read through this list. These are things currently that are being done, handled, volunteered for, that are part of your community today, in your jail. The sheriff and his staff. He's got, he's got a program director that's running the program, and about ten other things. She stole me about it. These are the things they're doing throughout the facility, and there's more. There's volunteers that wanna come and be a part of those programs, and wanna be a part of what we're trying to get accomplished at the end of the day. They don't have the space. The other thing that I'm gonna share about these programs is the individuals that probably could benefit the most from these folks, from these programs, sorry, are actually not in your community, or even housed in your facility. Actually housed out. So, one of the things, and I think I shared this earlier, trends, or maybe I didn't hear, but I had in the past. The other thing actually, as a trend component, it's, it's ongoing, it's been going forever, but not forever, but for a long period of time, is if you wanna house inmates out of county, counties don't take your max custody folks, special needs folks, mental health, uh, uh, inmates. They don't take those individuals. Not going to, they don't have the space for them, they're the problem folks, and they don't want them in their own facility. So, what do they take? They take the minimum. And the minimum, the minimum custody individuals, female and male, are the ones that can benefit the most from these programs. It's not that the others can't. They can as well. But those are the guys and gals that are gonna come back and be a part of your community shortly, and they haven't had an opportunity to, to reach out to a counselor and be a part of that group. Those are the types of things we've gotta start to think about. Because they're gonna come back into your community anyway. So, they come back, and then they go back to the revolving doors we talked about earlier. Is this a, just to raise your hands. Ever seen this? Do you know about this? Anybody know that these were all the things that your current jail group was doing? Raise your hand if you know. Yeah? Kudos to sheriff's staff and, and the commissioner for being able to make this happen. You know, one of the elements that's not on here that you don't see is, uh, and it was a program that you may have saw on some of my other slides, was GED. So, uh, currently, the GED program is not being, uh, run in this facility. Part of that's a grant dollar issue that they've been talking about. And I know the sheriff and the commissioner are having a conversation about how to get that back up and running again. And it's also about the local features here locally, and we're gonna be a part of that, we need to back incorporate it in that. So, those types of things are, are in, in motion, and try to think about how to do that, the current state, and sure.
Again, we're backing the inmates that are in the house.
So, I wanna throw a number up here, something that you probably have seen. This is not a new number for you. This is a number you've actually seen. So, over last year, um, you had Jim Rockson doing some planning and programming. And over that timeframe, Jim, Jim worked through a lot of the nuances of forecasting and looking at not just today what those numbers need to be, but what those numbers need to be for twenty years. So, this is a twenty-year lookout. And this is a, a number of four twenty-four is what that twenty-year lookout is, okay? So, that's not today. That's a twenty thirty-nine number at the end of the day. What I also share with you is this. I know I found, when we were talking today a little bit about some of these numbers, um, somebody mentioned to me that Jim did the program the very first time your facility was, um, planned and then designed. Jim actually did those numbers, and those numbers are spot-on from that day to today. So, the forecasting that was done twenty years ago is spot-on. Those inmates that were forecasted in nineteen ninety-four, ninety-five is the same number today as what was forecasted, okay? That's pretty good. That's a pretty good tracker. And Jim does it all over the, all over the nation. So, this isn't a number that somebody just went and pulled out, said, "Here's what we think it needs to be." This is actually research done with your community and understanding what that is. This also says that there's programs that we're doing and incorporating to keep this number where it is today. That we're talking about, okay? Does anybody drive by this second floor? Know where this is at? I hope so. I, I hope you have. And if you have not, as I said before, you need to come out. This is the current jail facility and current site. There was some forethought looked at when this building was first designed. And we looked at, uh, the architect and the designer looked at this as a site for expansion, looked at this site as it relates to, um, the jail itself, and the proximity of the law enforcement, for the courthouse, for those things. Now, it's twenty-five years ago. It's well-used, it looks great. You drive by it, we were talking about this at lunch today too. You could drive by it, and it looks great. The structure is well, well-put together, um... I really would suggest for you to travel and, uh, take time to go through that facility. If you haven't been in the facility, here's what the facility looks like on plan inside. Housing in this area here, in this area here. It's not much daylight to those housing, housing units. Exercise area at this location here. It's used by a multitude of different inmates and classifications, so it's gotta have an opportunity to actually rotate. So, time rotation for each of those inmates that are in this facility have to go to that space. You have to make sure you got the right classification. Can't mix those classifications in that space. Programs and support, if so, here, in office space for staff. If you actually go over there, there's water leaks, um, there's a lot of things beneath this stuff that's coming off. So, this is what this facility is. That's hanging in there, it's doing good stuff. Pretty simple, keeps it together. Booking down there in the purple area, some housing, um, for dorm style on the other side. Well-designed. The thing is, mental health? There's no, there's no mental health, there's no medical. We don't have that ability in this facility currently. How's those types of individuals in here? So, we've gotta start to think about those things, and think about that long-term. Just to match on, give you an idea of what that building looks like, and what that building is today, if you ever had a chance to drive by. So, I spent some time talking about some trends, talking about golden parages. I've talked about programs that are currently being used within the facility. You now have an opportunity, if you haven't, to actually get a little bit of this out there in the current facility. So, with that, I'd like to open it up to questions, or answers. Thoughts, comments? Yes?
When you refer to mental health, explain that. I mean, what are, what are you putting into that category?
So, I, uh, individuals that have, um, that, that may be traumatized, mainly domestic violence component, of those that are on medication, then maybe, maybe there's a, a medical issue that they have from that perspective. And the thing is, is, um, certain kind of facilities after they actually come in, they're not able to keep up with their, uh, medication. So, a lot of those individuals have to come into this space, uh, and work through that. So, those are the types of individuals that I would, I would consider. There may be some others that we look at as we look at that classification.
Who assesses that, or folks?
That's a great question. So, right now, currently, uh, sheriff has a clinician that is, that does a medical screening component. Uh, so, they go through, and they screen each individual that comes into the facility, ask questions and what have you, and that person is assessed at that point. The other thing that I would share about this current facility, to your point, is there is no classification housing unit currently. So, when I talk about classification, let me clarify that a little bit. Classification is looking at an individual and then understanding where they fit in the grand scheme of the jail process, okay? And understanding what their risks are and the staff's risks are to those individuals. So, if I'm a minimum-level person, it may be me, because I'm calm, I'm not, I'm, I'm gonna do exactly what the sheriff tells me to do. I'm here for my thirty-day sentence, and I'm moving out of the road. If I'm a, a person that's acting up every day, not wanting to do what, what the sheriff's staff's asking me to do, I throw my food around, whatever that may be, I may be on the max end. So, when I talk about classification, that's what I'm talking about. We don't want the person that's a, coming in for that thirty days, I'm here for a DUI, I wrote a bad check, with the guy that just came in that shot someone. Those are the types of things we're talking about, so on the mental health side, that's that screening element. So, we go through that, the sheriff's staff goes through that and screens those individuals to determine that. A lot of times, what you would see in, in some facilities, is they actually have a classification housing unit. They would actually put that individual into, and they would observe them for seventy-two hours. And then they can determine where they fit in the classification component and put them into proper housing. So, they may actually at that point be able to determine if they've got a mental health component that they weren't aware of based on the screen.
Are they thinking about having an area in the new facility to accommodate detox?
Yes.
Because I think that would be an issue, whether it's alcohol, or meth, or coke, or... You, you know, when you hook somebody in, and they're high, what happens to them? I mean, you know, because they're gonna go through detox.
Right.
There's gonna be a place for that.
We need to make sure we get that in. Good point. What else? Yes?
So, that's the current site. Uh, is that the same site that's being considered for a remodel?
So, as I said, when we started, there are those solutions. Um, we are going to look at all options. Whether that's providing a solution that, that fits on the site, providing a solution that may be a multiple, or partial on this site, or partial somewhere else. What, what's that mean? Maybe there's a solution, as we look at this overall, that there's a solution that says we gotta be on a greenfield site for the new facility because of what we see inmates are today. And what we're trying to do with those inmates from a program standpoint, with those types of things. So, we're gonna look at all that. And we'll be able to bring them here, and you can look at them, and talk about them, sketch over them, and give us your two cents, and make some choice, and, and at least get your voice out there. Yes, sir?
Uh, I know you spoke a little bit on this, but could you just go back to previous slide and just kinda outline what you think of the deficiencies in, in the design?
Yeah, you mean to ask me to do something, I'm not sure if I can do it.
You mean go back to the previous slide?
Go back to the previous slide.
And also, what is the green stuff from the housing?
This is law enforcement, right here?
No.
So, I, I think the thing that I would share as it relates to deficiencies within this building is a two or three. Couple different things, it's twenty-five years old. Um, so, uh, the mechanical, electrical plumbing components are wearing out. That's one thing that I would sit here and tell you, we've gotta spend some time thinking through what that is. From a design perspective, I would tell you that the design of having a, um, a direct, indirect type of scenario seems to work really well for what we're trying to do here as it relates to minimum and medium housing.
Sorry, what do you mean indirect?
An officer actually sits right at this location right here, and actually observes what's going on in all of these housing, these housing units here, but then they actually go in.
Grove?
And actually go in and observe what's going on within it. So, that's a direct, indirect. A direct supervision would be if this officer actually sat right inside this housing area. Um, indirect would be if you just sat in that central control and observed via camera, and you just wandered around every once in a while to observe what's going on. So, I would call this a hybrid of the direct and direct, because you're right here. Inmates come out of this space, uh, get their, uh, have conversations, go to programs, those types of things. The thing that I think, uh, one of the other pieces is right now, there are not any program spaces in this building. Um, medical, although I'm showing this as a larger area, really, at the end of the day, this was originally medical here, there, there's a small area for medical. It's very inadequate for what we're trying to get accomplished, and what needs to be happening within this facility. Um, they have one office space that has four people sitting in. Um, they have records that's smaller than my closet at home, and I don't have a very good closet. Um, so, so again, those types of spaces. Organizationally, um, having a linear piece works really well. This is outdated, in this general area here. And we've got some inmates in this, although it's a jail admin, there is also some other inmates that are in this space. And that's a, uh, is that the nineteen sixty there?
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two. Um, and it's bar grade and what have you. So, go tour the facility. This is outdated, it needs to change, okay? And most of that's female, is it not?
No, all female, really, no. Correct. The good point is that doesn't have enough bodies on.
Right. Not enough program space, not enough staff space. He's got staffs that are currently in there, and there's not enough space for them to office out of, or anything along those lines as well. But, but that's, that's the evolution of a, of a building that has, was designed to do, or was set up to do in nineteen ninety-four, and is doing what it is doing today. So, those are the things I think you, you have to consider. I saw somebody, yes, sir. Well, just kinda going back to what you said, you said that the female inmate population has increased by fourteen times. Why is that? That's one question.
Yep.
And the other question I would have, when you're talking about this, first of all, I think you have wonderful ideas about the program and the, and the housing after, that sort of thing. But, kinda clear me up, a county jail, what is the average stay? And what are the vast majority of the people that are housed in a county jail? What, what's the crime? Is it, uh... Where are we going with that? I mean, what you're, what you're putting out there is great, but it sounds to me like more of a long-term stay. I mean, we're gonna have programs in-house, and this and that. In order for anybody to get anything out of a program, they're gonna need to feed it a while. So, are the sentencing guidelines askew now? We've got fourteen times more females, why is that? And how long will we stay in a county jail? What's, I mean, what's... I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer the female, and then I'm gonna ask the sheriff to answer the other questions, because I know he knows the numbers that we talked about earlier. Sure. Um, as it relates to the females, why are we seeing that more and more today? They're getting more involved in drugs and, and alcohol. And, and that's a big proponent of what we see out there. Beforehand, that was not what we saw, uh, within the, within the communities. So, that's part of it. Uh, the other thing that we are seeing is there's more domestic violence and those types of things that are occurring today. And because that's happening, we're seeing that trickle-down, where they're now, um, either on their own, being on their own, uh, being violent for their own kids, whatever that may be, yet still they're, they're coming back and being a part of the, up in, in the system. That's, that's, I think, holding it down in some part of the world, we're seeing that. Sheriff, can you answer the, the couple items as it related to average daily, or average time stay?
The average daily stay, if you, if you don't, if you come to jail and you don't post bond or make bond within the first twenty-four hours, it's up around twenty-eight days. It's in that twenty-eight day range. So, you're at an av, that's average. So, of course, we've got some that have been there for months and months, and we've got some that stay a week. But an average is twenty-eight days. So, it's that group that, that's there for some time, you know, the guys that come in for drug offenses, that they'll stay in jail. Contrary to what people think about the jail being full of people with marijuana charges, I told one guy a couple weeks ago, we had one guy in jail simply for marijuana possession, and he was out within... We had one guy in jail simply for marijuana possession, and he was out within thirty-six hours, he was there, I'm sure what happened. He came in on a district court charge, couldn't post bond in a day and a half, they were in a solitary confinement. Who does, they're not in jail for possession of marijuana. Some people like to believe, I'm not saying that they don't use marijuana or whatever other illegal drugs and commit other crimes, but those other crimes are the key to jail.
Did that get your question answered? Good. Yes, sir?
One of the questions was, when you're charged, what's the meaning of they aren't?
I can't really say the percentage of, because they were under the influence, because that's not something we really track. I did take upon myself just last week to go through all the bookings on one day, everybody would have a custody, looked at their past, and of that group, it was over seventy-five percent had some sort of drug crimes in their, either currently or in their past. What that says, I don't know, I know the drug use, and people that are in jail, same, you know, I've been in the run together, I see that over and over and over. Whether they're in jail that time for drug use is, is that time. Whatever they're dr, they're driving, their crimes are gonna buy something, you know, and so, and, and people don't think they're really forced to use drugs. So, you know, this war on drugs is really true, the war on drugs, and it's, it drives a lot of people's behavior, and alcohol. As far as, as being able to say, yeah, they, they did this because they were with influence at that time, I don't think that's always true. I think some of the times, they committed this crime because they weren't under the influence that they wanted to be, you know, if they're on steel, then, or doing whatever they can to get their next fix. And you'll have some inmates who'll tell you, if you'll talk to them, the ones that are really honest will tell you, even if they've been in jail for a month, a lot of them will tell you, the first thing they're gonna do when they get out is go get high. And that's not new, you know, when I started in the jail thirty years ago, I would get that from some inmates, if you'd sit and talk to them, they'd tell you that. That's not a new mentality, that's not a new problem, but the drugs that are out there now are, I mean, are part of a problem, a new problem that's very deadly, you know? It goes back to what's going on with drug issues.
So, you, uh, you used to figure four hundred and twenty-four beds, so what's our current...
One fifty-four? No, well, currently we have a hundred and ninety-two beds, forty of those beds are in the old jail, that's why you came up with it. It's a hundred and fifty-two in the new part of our jail. That old part, that's a linear style jail, hasn't been built for, since the sixties, and shouldn't be used, I mean, it's really not. Going there, it's kinda like being in a dungeon, no light, no natural light, it's really, but we, we use it because we need the space. We need those bed spaces right now, so, and the, the inmates aren't monitored, like, you know, there's not someone there to watch what's going on, because we don't have staff down there to watch what's going on, so. The, just the, the setting is not safe, but, but it's what we have and use. I forgot the rest of your question, did you ask about the...
Just the number of beds?
Okay, the number of beds. So, you know, that's four hundred and twenty-four beds, and we talked about this earlier today, that sounds like a lot. But in the last two, in the last two years, at some point in the year, we've been over three hundred in jails, so, we did three oh five, three oh six. When you put that in perspective, and we're looking at a twenty-year window, that's not a great stretch to think of twenty years, we may end up with another twelve-five percent.
So you're saying a lot of times there are hundreds inmates that are...
Outdoorside, yeah, that's, we've been north for many of the last two years in contract housing costs. Last year's daily average was two hundred and sixty-nine inmates in jail, so, that's the average. Some, sometimes it's higher, sometimes it's lower. We've been fortunate this year, the count has been down a little bit, and I, and right now, the count's higher than normal is in the center, so, we saw a roll. What can we give a trick to that do?
When you talk about that cost, are you just doing the housing part of it, or are you talking about the time that the officers have to transport and everything down?
That's just the housing cost.
That's just the housing cost. So if you include, you know, the number to look at, it's not just the housing cost, how much time that the officer may have spent on the salary while they're traveling, traveling from vehicles, the cost of that, that really, that's another thing, and I think the public needs to see to really understand the economic impact of shit moving someone out of, as opposed to potentially building a new jail or a bandy, because that's where the cost is.
The things I worry about are things that happen during those trips.
Yeah.
From here to there, because inmates are under different, well, some of them, some of them will get in the back of that van, and you can take one vacation with them, they never get out. And there are some of them that wouldn't make it to the block, and if they're in, they're wrong person, there's gonna be a fine for them. You know, they're always thinking of ways to do something, that's just, and it makes, like, everybody in this room, you know, half of you, if I said, let's go rest, and some of you might, some of you might never wanna do it. It's just, it's just the nature of people.
Would you send an inmate to, say, Middle County or Ottawa County, do they charge differently? If it's, you know, does Mitchell County charge different than Ottawa to, to house?
The only county, they're all right now, thirty-five dollars.
Thirty-five?
Started this, that day, per, per day, per inmate. The only one that's hired is Gary County, they're sixty-five a day. And they, they figured that off their actual cost, cost them sixty-five dollars a day to house them, that's what they're gonna charge. So it's, it's not, it's just the decision, I mean, we have no, there's no statute or anything that controls that, it's just whatever the, the county determines the cost, that's what we're gonna pay.
What's, what's Salina County's cost?
Per day?
Yes.
If you, if you, uh, take, there's a huge formula you can put into, but I just did it the other day, just our, just our jail budget divided by the number of inmate days, and it's forty-nine dollars and something a day, but that doesn't take in depreciation or employee benefits, or, there's a lot more that we figured into that, it'd probably be more than sixty-one a day.
Um, I was curious on the, uh, slide that showed the community resources that, that in jail and out. Uh, and I assume that I, that's something that you, uh, feel good about, or that you brag about, or am I correct? In other words, that there are quite a, a few community services in Salina that are used, and, or, am I, am I, am I, I reading that?
That's probably, I'm not a big graver, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not out too much on putting everything out, and everything's working all that. I think it's important that we do it, but I'm not so, I don't feel like it, I've never, up till now, probably not so important to tell people we do it, it's the right thing to do. You know, anything we can do to, to keep them from coming back is the right thing to do, so, whether it...
Well, I guess, Mike, and would you agree with that, Jeff, that, that Salina does have quite a, I mean, am I just reading that, or...
No, I, I think that your community is doing a lot, um, and, and it's more here than some other communities are doing.
I, to me, I think that is an important thing to know, and to really take responsibility for. In other words, I see that as part of the jail expansion, quote-quote. If you, in other words, we do have, um, a number of community resources. So how can we more intentionally make those, make those connections, so that we end up with a healthier, that, that, that gets all part of us?
That's, that's full intention, is what we'd like to do, it's hard to, it's hard to work on that right now, and I struggle just to keep the inmates moving and in court on time, and there's not enough space, you know, it's...
And I'm not saying that...
I have to make this priority, the priority right now is to be safe.
I'm simply saying that is a wonderful resource.
Yeah, it is.
That we do have, and that, uh, is, um, something that I think we, we can, we can own, be responsible for, and be more intentional about. Good, where do you, I mean, and, and we talk about getting people back into the community. So how do we, say, good for you for doing it, the way you're doing it, how do we do it better?
Well, there's potential for a lot of them. You know, what you mentioned is that the ones that can really probably benefit from it are being transported out and don't get a chance to utilize those things. So they, everyone that's going out doesn't get access to any of those things that are being offered. So if you're moving them somewhere, instead of keeping them local, taking care of it here, they get more additional things in addition to, you stay on the cost of transportation, plus they get some resources that hopefully leads them to not going back.
And that, transporting them out also adds to the length of stay that they're here, because their attorneys don't go to see them, they typically don't travel to see them. So when they show up for court, a lot of times, they just wanna talk to them and get a continuance and push it down the road that way, and so, it's kind of, you know, you're building up to this length of stay, but you're not having here to see them.
Yeah, I would kind of learn to follow on on Mark, Mark was going to, and I, I agree with him. I was wondering, you should have statistics sort of data on how frequently per month each of those, say, in customer programs might now face with the jail. I mean, help with the limited facilities we have now, for that building, um, you have made up on the state of that connection with the community right now, and those services.
She, she deals with this every day.
Jeff, can you go back to the list, and I can kinda give you a rough idea of what we're looking at? I'm making a do-something, he's got her here, everyone has to say. Okay, so our in custody program, Central Kansas Mental Health comes in twice a week. Uh, she spends roughly sixteen hours a week coming in and doing group sessions as well as individual groups. AA and NA are once a week for each of them. Faith-based programs, that kind of lump sums multiple different agencies. I've got probably four different religions right now that come into the facility. Keep in mind, though, with the church foods and religious faith-based programs, all of them want to come in our area. Okay, so if I've got thirty-two churches in jail, chances are thirty-two churches are in Salina County, chances are thirty-two churches wanna come into the jail. I don't have the time or the space to work with them to do that, so I've had to selectively choose over the years who can come in, okay? Uh, trustee work program, or inmate workers, you guys see them out mowing yards, that kind of stuff, uh, that's daily. We have inmate workers, roughly twenty inmates per day that are working every day, ranging from anywhere from eight to fourteen hours a day for us. That's saving you guys money, by, because we're able to put them to work, they make the meals, they mow the yards, they clean up in the facility. That's saving the taxpayers money, uh, by us being able to give them skills for those that have never worked in a kitchen before, we are giving them an opportunity. They learn food service skills while they're in jail. So that's for our trustee slash inmate work program. Work release is court ordered, that varies depending on who goes to court, how long they're sentenced, if they're sentenced in, if they've got multiple court cases going, if they're sentenced in all of those. We've ran anywhere from none, up to about fifteen inmates that are on the work release program. These are the ones that come and spend their evenings in jail, they go out, they work their eight, ten, twelve-hour job, they come back to jail, okay? Uh, so that one varies. Probably healthy families come in and deal with just strictly pregnant, uh, parents, pregnant mothers. We connect them with services in the community, so when they get out, or after they've delivered that child, they can connect them with the WIC program, various programs that they may need. So that, that is based upon need only with pregnant mothers. Fatherhood Initiative, they come in twice a week. Central Kansas Foundation comes in twice a week. We're working on actually making connections with them so that they can do evaluations as well, so they would actually be coming in three times a week, once we think that'll establish. Life Skills comes in once a week, and the High School Diploma Program, which we currently do not have because of funding, the way the state changed all their funding, but they were coming in every day, uh, five days a week. So we actually had three teachers that would come in, um, that occupied the time for that, so that we could access males, the minimum, medium security, males the maximum security, and then the females. Um, and then of course, out of county, those are just various different programs that we are able to connect some of the inmates that we have to those different programs.
I understand that there's been one group that is used on the chair of our program, would you understand? If you had a better facility in the whole state, how much would you issue, do you, uh, turn that to me?
Um, I think they would work better, we would be able to open those up to more inmates at a time. Because of safety reasons and security issues that we have, we can only bring in approximately twelve inmates for a program at one time. When we have a facility of a hundred, just roughly say, a hundred and ninety-two inmates, because that's how many beds we have. We're not offering that opportunity to everybody that could use that opportunity. So we have to limit those programs. I can't take fifty inmates and put them in a program with one volunteer. That's just not reasonable, it's not safe, and we don't wanna do that, so the volunteers that come in our facility. Um, so we have to be very selective as to who gets to go. And again, the ones that would benefit the most are the ones that we have out of county. So that would make a big difference, the ones that we want to, to bring in for those programs, and then release them back into the community with those resources that they need to keep their families going, have jobs when they leave, so that they can continue or become productive members.
If we had more space, you would, or, or more programs, more volunteers, more opportunities for those inmates, and we would also bring those inmates back.
And those...
For the programs? Um, we've not discussed specifically for programs, as we've looked at possible expansion, different facilities, we've discussed additional staffing for that, as it may come up. But specifically for programs, no, because we like to rely upon our community members to be volunteers for that. And there's plenty of them out there that are willing to do it, and I just don't have the space to put them in.
All the programs, I mean, our volunteer...
The people that are in other, that we ship out to other counties, do they get these same, same kind of programs in those counties?
No.
So they can't, so they're, get, come back here and they're basically...
Once they come back here, they have the opportunities for these programs, but when they're in the other counties, we can't control what programs those other counties have.
Would the other counties offer programs?
Other, other counties do offer some programs, I don't think they offer the opportunities that we have. We're not going in any service room by having them out of county and not being able to help them, because they're coming back here. They're getting released here, they're going out to live next door to you, or down the street, around the corner, kind of thing. So we're not able to help them and try and keep them coming back.
I don't, I don't want the other counties, I'm not gonna, someone I bring in, I'm not gonna get them in a program, I don't get the ones that are here in that county to get those services, because I want my people to be better citizens.
Correct.
You know, just, just the way it would work.
We've been very fortunate with the other counties that we're contracting with, that they do work with us in, in all the different areas that they possibly can. But he's got a perfect point, they're gonna put their own inmates in versus our inmates.
What counties are being involved then?
We've got Cloud County, Ottawa County, uh, Ford County, Mitchell County. Washington County.
Brooks, Graham County.
Brooks, Graham, I mean, we have contracts with, with ten different locations right now.
Do any of your inmates, are they attached to the state facility, are we not transferring them to Arizona?
We don't have any control of that, that's at the state level, so I couldn't be, I couldn't give you an honest answer there, sir.
Okay. Jeff, beginning to call them, you made a statement, identify the cause.
Yes, sir. Did it? We haven't yet, because our team hasn't yet.
How many more meetings are we gonna, if you're program, you're gonna put back to us?
So, our open debate, and we intend to be in our next panel, is we'll be able to tell you what that, what the issue is, what the problem is. So that will be our next step, I mean, for...
You have a prepared debate?
We actually said that somewhat, January third.
You have programs for the inmates, there's a program for the citizens of Salina, and it's the Citizens Academy. For us to learn what these people are doing to save us from bad people, and keeping us safe. We need to educate ourselves and do the Citizens Academy. I went through both of them, and as an I-ord, because you should be applauded for what you guys do.
I would have to make this statement, because it's hard, I heard the word is bad people, I think we need to keep in mind, inmates are not bad people, they're working souls that have done bad behavior, and that's what we need to help them know, that they're good, we are, but the behavior that, uh, is because of the weather.
Currently now, you have, like, nobody's talked about visitation, and I think that family and friends support of inmates is really important. Is, at the projected facility, is there more or different type of visitation rooms? Or, because now it's just monitors and it's really far and sterile and-
We actually talked about that today as we went through Sona program, looking at the list of spaces, we're all looking at that, for the visitations, single contact, the non-contactive type of visitation, so we're looking for a standard.
Well, I don't disagree with Norman, but how about the other argument that all these social problems, like mental illness, they've kind of been dumped on law enforcement. Law enforcement really wasn't designed to deal with a lot of these social problems, but they have to, because that's what these people are ended up. And so instead of putting them to jail, why don't we insist that other parts of society step up and deal with this stuff? I've heard that argument put forward.
What I'm saying more than anything is that it seems to me that Salina needs to know who Salina is and the kinds of resources that we have here and how, I mean, if you want to say how we do business or what. And we have outstanding resources, and I would say unusual resources. So how, as a community, do we take responsibility for that? That recognizes the need for expansion. I mean, I think that's-
Well, that's kind of what I'm asking.
And then how do we do it in a way that we can support it and that we can use, you know, how our resources? That, I'm, well, I think that's-
Well, what I'm saying is, whether it's one way or the other, it's an issue that you're going to have to track. Somebody's going to ask you that.
Right.
Or somebody's going to say, "Well, why are we giving all these programs for all these deadbeats that are in the..." And that's another thing that you're going to have to answer.
You know, I think that there's a jail reform committee and some other groups that are already set forth, that these communities already started with, that are looking at those types of things. And I don't know where you sit at the end of the day, but what I would share is get involved in those groups because I think the big ideas are there and trying to move that ball forward. So in a golf analogy, it's great to have a big idea, so the ball's on the tee, but at some point you actually have to hit the ball and move it forward. And I think taking individuals that can do that and start moving that ball down the fairway would be a great solution. And I think there's groups involved.
Well, I just want to say that I'm the director of Community Corrections, been doing that for 35 years. And so as everyone, I assume, understands across the nation, this is happening, this is a new dark community or anything else, and you can look at the state of Kansas, and you can look everywhere else, it's just the evolution of the criminal justice system. And one of the things we've seen just in the last five years is our administrative population for our adult clients has gone from 297, we're up to almost 500. And that's in our community. We're not talking about people that live in other communities, Slaying County, or 28th District, Odham, Slaying County. So you've got to remember that the criminal justice system is never evolving. Now, we've learned evidence-based practices, and we've all seen some of those evidence-based practices, free trial release, a drug court, all of that is evidence-based practices. And I applaud our county commissioners and the people that stepped up and given dollars to these programs that Community Corrections runs and is supported by our courts and our judges that care so much about this. But as we continue to develop those programs, that evidence tells us, reduce resimism, and we're seeing some real good things. And our drug court is excelling, and we're at, I think, an 89% success rate, and the national success rate is 64%. So we're leaps and bounds, and we're just doing the right things. But to do those right things, you have to start somewhere. And almost every inmate, every client I see started in jail. And if their house there is 30, 60, 90 days, and they get none of the evidence-based tools given to them, which includes substance abuse, it includes detox, it includes triage, deciding, are they mentally ill or are they substance addicted, or are they both? And what are we going to work on first? And where are we going to put them so we're going to meet those needs? Because we don't address that in the jail and make a difference there. Every time they come out, they're beaten up against a wall. And all I do is keep shoveling money at them and keep putting them in services over and over and over again, but they are never getting everything they need, and they tend to go back. And we're not addressing the problem. Now, I just pulled out my latest chart, in the last 10 months or so, we spent almost $22,000, Community Corrections alone, $22,000 in housing, about $7,500 in substance abuse treatment, about the same amount in mental health. So we're doing what evidence is telling us, we're addressing those peoples and those critical incidents of high risk, but the jail is dealing with them daily like that. They're not getting a choice to putting in certain programs and spend the money that Community Corrections writes grants and does those dollars for. And if we don't start in the jail, doing those programs and doing the services there, we're going to keep doing this back out there, and it's going to continue to increase taxpayers' money, it's going to continue to bust up the seams. My officers are carrying 50 and 60 high-risk clients on a regular basis. And as it was said earlier, they go to your schools, they go to your public schools, they sit next to your children, their neighbors are yours, they're doing those things. And if you want a healthy community and act on that healthy community, you have to have a healthy jail. You have to have it, just as you want healthy schools and healthy community, faith-based, you have to have those things. And that's 35 years of living through it in this county.
So, a question that keeps coming up in my mind is, how many of our inmates actually ought to be in a mental hospital or an inpatient drug treatment facility instead of jail?
That's not my call. We got to retain places, send people for evaluations. They come for evaluations, the problem with that is, the jails there because they've committed a crime, they're not in jail because they have mental health issues. They have to deal with this crime, and a lot of times they are getting evaluated and they send them over to have, and we send people who aren't up for some evaluations routinely, when we can get them in if that's a longer-
What do you hear in?
But the bottom line for me is, if Norman asked me what the problem is, the problem from where I sit is I don't have enough beds. The bottom line right now for me is I don't have enough bed space to deal with inmate count that I have. And I can't change that.
Right, but the question is, should there be other kinds of beds?
Oh yeah, absolutely, we should have kinds of beds to be there. Because they're here, they're here and I don't get the option to say, "Oh, I like that," when they're going, "I wish I did." How about that option?
Can you make them change?
Yes, absolutely.
Is it appropriate to add that, or if this population went to jail or in a mental health facility, for instance?
Essentially, you need both. Essentially, you're going to need both. If we have to send somebody to market for a mental health evaluation, males are on probably work for three to six months, we have to keep them in our jail to get into one. No pun intended, right?
Yes.
Right, but, I mean, it's taking three, six months to get some internal evaluation to get them back to court to figure out what we're going to do with them. That's days that we're housing these people that they have more than likely mental health issues, probably a severe mental health issue that we have to deal with, that we're correction officers, we're not mental health staff. We're having to become mental health staff. We're having to become first aid responders, we're having to become everything that we never thought, speaking from 25 years' experience, everything that we never thought we would have to do as law enforcement, we are now having to evolve and become.
So that's part of, I mean, that's state issue.
Right, the state's out building beds at this point.
And where's the state?
To your point, but the thing is, is they're putting it on the shallow, if you don't build housing or don't have housing for those individuals, you're not hoping for- You know, and we're kind of down to this, right now, at one point, it's about figuring somebody else. I think what it is, is they're trying to take ownership here, so we can take care of this community here, and hopefully the state and others will take initiative, but you can't wait for somebody else to say, "Well, it's their fault, we're not going to deal with it." You've got to deal with the community here to take care of it so that it can be safe from everyone around, and those that need help can get the help, and you're not shipping them here, shipping them there, and maybe they get self-help here, maybe they get help here. We have facilities here, we can take care, if they come in once and they don't go back, you know, because they get what they need here, then we're better off, you know, I think. Not that we want more beds, you don't want more, but unfortunately, crime isn't going bad.
So, the thing that he needs, you do maybe need over 30 and above.
Well, am I not remembering, I definitely didn't even say this, I think I'm correct, part of the conversation of people like this, where the suggestion is to be a separate or separated facility, you know, held cases, perhaps as well as short-term, and I would hope that-
So part of the program that we have, part of the people discussing with the community is that there is a need to care to your core. There may be some long-term and there may be short-term care for mentally ill and insulin care. Where that is, I think we'll talk about at the next step.
So I just wanted, you mentioned since there are, in New York, it's sort of, just on particular the family visitation issue, which I think is very important. I recommend that you go online to National Family Nutrition this morning. Kansas City started a study, not just in Kansas, but focusing on foster kids in Kansas and other states, that there are some accessibility replacements that young people at age 18 out of that system, and perhaps even before, they have an effective structure to support. So that, obviously, you can't cover the management solution of the family visitation, where that's important, part of the consideration for your enforcement.
I've talked to Robert, I've talked to Sheriff Clay Mooney in the office, discussed it with these guys several times. We agree what the problem is. Now, you're going to have to accept the unacceptable. Has this been done before? Yes. Has it worked? Yes. It's a population issue. I've talked to him before at other meetings. We know what the problem is, we just don't want to do it as, oh, no, we can't do that. You're going to have to do what China did. How you want to do it, it's numbers. I know it's unacceptable, people, but-
What are you saying? I'm not-
Yeah, let's, I think we can take that offline, let me check my watch here. You know, I think one thing to say, you know, the mental health thing, that's kind of a separate issue, mental health still be close to the jail, because that's another issue that's probably need to be discussed here. You have to manage it at the jail level, the others is kind of-
I'm going to take to this question here, she's had her hand up a couple times and I've missed it, and then before you ask, we're going to be here, I'm going to be here, the commissioners will be here, so after this one, we'll, you can take a look at the art, if you have an opportunity to do that. We'll also be here, and we're more than happy to answer any other questions you have, but we're excited about coming back on January 30th and look for the time and the location.
I'm a volunteer with the ministry, and really and truly, the women, they're in the old gym, I didn't know that, and one year we was passing out candy candies, and I had a chance to go back there. And really and truly, the saying is, to see is to believe. You know, we can sit here and talk all day, we need this, we need that, but until you see what we need, then you understand, you know? It's terrible back there, the way they live. And the reason there's the biggest population now is women's, is women's now have to get out and make a living for their kids. And any mother sitting in here will agree with me, that you're not going to sit there and let your child go home when you can go out there and do something about it. But to see what these women's go through, not only on the outside, but in the inside of the jail, that's the county jail. They complain about mice being back there, you know? But we have to open our eyes, we're walking around in violence, not seeing what's really going on in our community. We can sit and talk about it all day, but you have to see it to believe.
Thank you. Do spend some time and actually see the art exhibit. I've had an opportunity twice, and it's a great exhibit. Thank you for your time tonight, thank you for the interest. Come back again, we'll be interactive and participatory next time. So have a great evening, and we'll be here as long as we can.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. We appreciate it very much. I want to reiterate, I want to thank the Swan Art Center for allowing us to come here, inviting us, by the way. And there have been some questions that have arisen, why are we having them down there? Well, if we got invited because of the jail project and because of what they have on display right now. And I think, and I'm probably speaking in one respect, but these designs that are back here are, come from actual inmates that are in jail, that they have corresponded with people and been able to draw a picture of their jail cells, and it's, you know, what's really happening out there in the real world. So I want to thank Jeff, I want to thank all of you for coming. I know you've helped Jeff, and I know Jeff has helped you guys, and both of you have helped me and my fellow commissioners, I can assure you. Even though we've been involved for years on this thing, we're hearing things we haven't heard before. And I think we're in very capable hands to allow us to, us as commissioners, to decide which project we want to present to the voters. And the voters will in turn have an educated position that they want to take and vote for which way they want to go and where you want your tax dollars to be spent. So with that having been said, I will declare the meeting for Slaying County Commissioners as adjourners. Thank you.
Thank you.